Thank you.
Okay.
Let it roll, let it rip, Precious.
Okay, good afternoon, good evening. Welcome to our meeting. Welcome Anya and I Amuse for being here. And for members, we have Emily Simon, John Tyler, Barbara Garrity, Tara Houston, Allison. Allison didn't change her name yet. And myself, Precious, and also our city liaisons Anne and Carrick. And we will get started. So I will choose someone who has the land acknowledgement out and then the labor acknowledgement. I was wondering if John would like to do the land acknowledgement and Tara the labor acknowledgement?
Yes, thank you.
And the acknowledgements are at the top of the agenda.
Hey, John.
Hey, guys. It looks like I'm double up with you, Carrick. I gotta change my name on there.
If you use my link, it uses your name.
Ah, gotcha.
There we go.
John, are you doing okay finding it there?
I'm, I'm looking here.
Oh, John, I could, I could do the land acknowledgement.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
There it is.
Oh, we've got it.
Okay, great, great.
We acknowledge, we acknowledge and honor the Aboriginal people on whose ancestral homelands we work. The Ikiro Katusum land of the Shasta Nation, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today, which is important. We denounce the egregious acts of the colonizers and government, and we recognize the horrific impacts that still exist today. We honor the first stewards in the Rogue Valley and the land we love and depend on. Tribes with ancestral lands in and surrounding the geography of the Ashland watershed include the original, past, present, and future indigenous inhabitants of the Shasta, Takalma, and Athabaskan people. We also recognize and acknowledge the Shasta village of Kwahakta, where the crow lies, but is now the Ashland City Plaza.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Acknowledgement from Tara.
We also pause to recognize and acknowledge the labor upon which our country, state, and institutions are built. We remember that our country is built on the labor of enslaved people who were kidnapped and brought to the US from the African continent and recognize the continued contribution of their survivors. We also acknowledge all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples who contributed to the building of this country and continue to serve within our labor force. We also acknowledge all unpaid caregiving labor. To the people who contributed this immeasurable work and their descendants, we acknowledge their indelible mark on the space in which we gather today. It is our collective responsibility to critically examine these histories, to repair harm, and to honor, protect, and sustain their contribution to our society.
Thank you so much. We'll move to the approval of the minutes from May ninth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Tara? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, John. Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. unanimous. Great. We'll move on. Emily has to depart a little early today, so I'm going to ask if she has announcements or anything she would like to talk about before we move on to Anya and I Amuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Precious. Firstly, I want to say goodbye to you and to Anne and acknowledge this is your last meeting. And thank you very much for everything you've done. And we certainly celebrated the two of you at our social gathering, so I just don't want to pass up the opportunity to say it. So thank you very much, both of you. On June eighteenth at six o'clock, Serge will be presenting at the city council meeting. And I really want to encourage all of us who are hearing me speak now to come to that meeting. There will be two things that we are, wait, somebody's got, is not muted and I'm hearing some background noise. So if people could mute, it would be really appreciated. Thank you so much. There are two things that will be presented at the city council meeting on the eighteenth. The first one is our, I think, historical review is the best way that I can describe it quickly. And Tara will be reading, as I understand it, her cover letter as well as summarizing what is in the initial letter, okay? Or the initial report, assuming that the city council members have not read it, okay? And it's just worthwhile to do that, Tara. And also asking for our recommendation in that, which is that we think we're done and have gone as far as we can go. And it's now up to the city if they spend some precious dollars on it or if they have another idea, but there's nothing more we can do. That's the first thing. The second thing regarding the DEI proposal and our review of the DEI proposal is I will be presenting that and what our recommendations were that came out of the meeting that we had. I want to, the reason I'm encouraging everybody to attend is because the mayor is very interested in this DEI proposal and wants to make sure that it is implemented in the city with a city council overview and with city council making sure that it happens and it just doesn't become a performative report. So I felt very positive following that meeting with the mayor, but we did make specific recommendations. So I think we need to push forward on why we made the specific recommendations. And I think we also need to push forward on saying, get it on the agenda now for when you are going to be looking at and following up with the city employees. And I had a very long meeting with her unbeknownst to me that I didn't know it was going to be so long on Thursday, and she raised lots of other issues relating to SIRJAC, including sort of the change in personnel that is just about to happen. So I think it would be really worthwhile if people can be there to be there. And I'm glad to have us meet because I can't think of another time for us to have a separate meeting about this fifteen minutes before at five forty-five at council chambers. I don't know where we are going to be on the agenda, but at least that would give us some time to sort of pull together and talk before we spoke to city council. Okay, anybody have any questions or concerns or comments just about that? It's Tuesday, June eighteenth at six o'clock. Allison?
I'm muted. Someone will send out an email with the time and place to remind us, yes?
Yes. Yeah, Carrick, will you do that, please? And include the five forty-five for meeting. And the, and the city council agenda. I can't hear you again, Carrick.
I can send that out. Yes, I can send a reminder about that.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. If you include the agenda for the city council, it will show us where we are. And Anne, for what?
When that's, yeah, when that's agenda is formed. It's not formed yet, so.
Right. And Anne, I know you're going to send out our recommendations for the DEI thing and the things we're going to talk. I think you call it the report to city council from us next week. Is that right?
So once, once the city recorder builds the council agenda, the attachments to the council agenda will be posted. So when you get the link to the council agenda that Carrick is going to send you, you will find that information as an attachment, as, as it's part of the packet. So then you can read the packet.
Great. Thank you very much, Anne. And thank you very much, Carrick.
So that, sorry, that, that may come as late as Friday evening. I know the city recorder tries to get it to the council by late Thursday or Friday, their agenda. Anyway, so if you don't see it until late Friday, you will get it.
Okay. All right. I think that's in the two-word warning. Don't panic. Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions or comments just about the city council meeting before we turn it over to Ananaya? And I'm going to really try and hang in here through all of Ananaya, but I do have another meeting that got scheduled slightly over this meeting. Precious, back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. So this evening, we welcome back Anya and I Amuse, the Managing Director of Idea, People, Culture, and Operations. And she will be doing her second part of our training, so welcome.
Thank you, Precious. Sorry, my mute button decided it didn't want to activate. So it's good to be here with you all. I think this is a little less of a training and more of a follow-up, right, on some of the things, the ideas that seem to manifest between our last meeting and now. And I think some of that work included the Listening Circles. And so before I dive into my thought process or any of that, I just want to ask folks where they are with the Listening Circles in terms of any feedback, any feelings or things that are coming up, because I have many opinions, but I don't want to just come in blasting my opinions. I want to really hear where they, where you are in the process and, and what your thoughts are about moving that work forward. Allison, I saw your hand.
Yeah, thank you. I would say that we've made progress on thinking it through and talking to people, but I would say, me personally and perhaps the whole subcommittee, I'm a little uncertain about what direction we ought to be going and what our goals really are. I'm, I'm less and less certain that I know what they are, the more work I do on it.
Got it. Got it. Anyone else?
We, excuse me. You know, in chatting with the subcommittee and in their presentation at our last meeting, there were some concerns about, you know, what, what was going to happen with the information collected at the listening sessions. And one of, you know, my concerns in our town with very few racial minorities is we ask the same people to come into rooms and talk about their trauma and then what happens next. And that piece, I think, is crucial for us to consider with care. And I think that's part of what, what has happened in the conversation around the Listening Circles is the what-happens-next purpose. So, yes, I think the concerns that I imagine are bubbling to the surface for you have come up in these spaces as well. So I think, you know, from, from last conversations, there, there may be a bit of a pause button that's been hit on these conversations. And, you know, maybe some suggestions about looking for something that's more proactive rather than listening. Like, what would be the next step of that?
Yeah, okay.
Well put, I think, Tara.
So let me tell you what I did. I took a look at some of the feedback from the Listening Circles, the Mike Green's comments, some of the information that was shared with me. And I will tell you what my immediate kind of response and reaction was. And Tara Houston, because we have the beauty of working together, this will not sound unfamiliar to Tara. I do think a pause is a very good step because I think that the Listening Circles are generative. I think the work that you are trying to do makes sense, but I think you're missing a lot of steps between thinking, planning, and doing. And one of the things that comes up for me is this piece around what your short-term and long-term goals are, which I read over several times. I think to get there, you need to have more of a planning structure that talks about dates. Are you talking about a twelve-month planning? Are you talking about a two-year planning and rollout and implementation? And how are you involving the people beyond these paragraph responses that I saw regarding the work? And, and I think the goal is to first do no harm. And I think what Tara is pointing out is such a big flag. It, it happens even internally at OSF. When we're trying to plan around idea or DEI work and we're trying to plan engagement and we want to win, sometimes we get so hungry for the win that we bypass some of the necessary steps. And so some of this felt like there are pieces missing. One major piece is if your goals, your short- and long-term goals are as stated, where is the facilitation of that? Who is facilitating that? Because it looks like from the council rules and regulations, you can't, the council can't facilitate all of that on your own. So how are you engaging a facilitator? Who would that facilitator be? And how are you getting the funds to get to that? Because you really need somebody with subject matter expertise. You need somebody with lived experience. And you need somebody who can help bridge build with the community that are the same people that are consistently being asked to come and give their labor to these conversations, right? And so I just think it's critical that you push pause and that you work on the process and determine if Listening Circles are actually the thing that you need to be doing to get more buy-in and contribution and bridge-building with those groups. Now, three years is the amount of time I spent living in Ashland. I have my own lived experience, right? And so I am in no way speaking for the entirety of the BIPOC community in Ashland. But what is always confounding to me is I see the same names because of the limited number of folks there. And it feels often like we're asking them the same questions in different settings. I know that OSF is asking those questions, SOU is asking those questions, Ashland Together is asking and interrogating those questions. So I think a plan, a very real plan, is going to take concerted effort and time. So in the last time that I was with you all, I talked about that slide. And I don't know if you all have it, if you can pull it up, the one that shows the transactional versus transformational work. Let me see, I may be able to share my screen so that you can see. Give me one moment.
That would be really helpful because I certainly don't remember the slide well enough.
I think it's going to allow me to do it now. Here we go. All right, so can you see this?
Yep.
Great. So when I presented this before, I gave you a list of what is considered transactional life, uh, work, right? In, in the work versus transformational. So remembering that transactional is overly focused on structure. It does perpetuate white cisgender heteronormative neurotypical able-bodied systems of power and is mostly transactional, like we're giving you a thing or we're asking for a thing and you're giving us something back. It often avoids or denies spirit. It values linear thinking. It's run by timelines, right? And does not acknowledge or center indigeneity. It sees approaches, plannings, and deliverables mechanically and often does not center power building in community. What you want to get to is the transformation that focuses on the whole scope of work, including structural, environmental, and individual impacts. It centers collectively spiritual practice. It requires circular and relational strategies that are co-created, co-led, relies on organizing and power building or building power. And it strives to center world indigeneity, decolonizing, and re-indigenizing. It sees everything as a living system. It's interconnected and is incomplete without centering environmental justice. And it centers liberatory practice. So you also have this slide. I think that is one example of why I say the pause is, is necessary. Part of helping you get through that is another thing that I often use in my work called the wave model. And Tara, from your studies and YouTube, Precious, you brought, this may be familiar if it's not familiar to others. So I will share that wave model with you as well. Let me try to enlarge a little because it's... Are you all seeing this?
Yes.
Okay. So in this methodology, the folks that I know and folks I work with use the wave model as a compassionate approach to understand how humans perceive themselves in larger systems by uncovering experiences and perceptions at both the individual and a more global level. A full picture then emerges of the areas of strength and opportunity. From this, we craft recommendations for how to address concerns, build relationships, and deepen committee and staff skills in ongoing relationship building and systems change. What you all are doing, although it is community engagement and DEI and idea work, it is also systems change work. You're looking at a system. You're trying to make better what's happening in that system. And so to do that, there is a process that often needs to, to occur. So here, and I'm just going to give you a few examples. This model looks at centering healing and care. It looks at how you find yourself seeing the system and visualizing the committee's work and structure to do the work. It's looking at deepening relationships, identifying shared values and beliefs, and also looking and shifting power to evaluate the power dynamics at play in the work that you're doing. I'll give an example of that that I think is really critical in just a moment. It's also about communicating and examining the communication flows. Locating yourself in the work. When am I centering me over the outcomes that need to happen? When am I centering my wants or my needs for the group when I need to be thinking about the group that's most impacted by the work I'm trying to do? And then that leads to connecting, building, and enhancing the positives in the ecosystem. So what's working really well? And then looking at what isn't. The working across difference, which leads, comes after that connecting, excuse me, and building. So, so considering what is and is not working. And then what's the multi-level strategy? Because you can't have a strategy, again, that's just linear or just one layer. And ensuring that the strategy is in support of the full team, not just the committee for what they want to achieve, but all of the stakeholders, and especially the stakeholders who are most deeply impacted by whatever the outcomes are going to be. And then there's this part of the model where you learn, adapt, and you're ready for new opportunities to emerge. So this piece about power dynamics, the shifting of power dynamics and the dynamics at play, I just want to talk a little bit about because as somebody who has done community engagement work, who also happens to be a black woman, when I led the work in Marin County in particular, it's a very wealthy county, as you all know, when you go into a place like Marin City, regardless of the socioeconomic standing that you have, you forget that Marin City is adversely impacted by almost every policy that the county creates. That's not always the intention of the county. It's not like they, they think we're going to decimate these folks. But you're talking about a very dense population of low-income people in an extremely wealthy community. And the habit that forms in trying to help is that people who have built community in that dense population are often given these policies that are supposed to work for everybody. So I'm going to give an example. Single-use plastic bags, right? And water jets, right? So these are two policies that mandate that you cannot buy bottled water in bulk. You've got to have these types of vessels for water. But you all know how much these non, like environmentally safe, like you don't want to have harm, how much they cost. And so the other thing that came out of that was certain types of straws and giving each household, making the decision to purchase utensils. Actual eating utensils, not plastic forks that are in the plastic packets that come with a little salt and pepper. To anybody who has a job and income, that just seems so innocuous and simple, right? It's not a big deal. But in an effort to create a space where things were more environmentally sound and safe, it didn't consider the socioeconomics of people who are on SNAP benefits. It didn't consider the impact to them. And it caused this ripple effect of impact. And people were like, we were just trying to do good. And so you really need to interrogate your process and come up with a process, again, that considers every angle. One thing that I saw in the document was about another Juneteenth celebration, and I have to be very honest with you. I had a, a bit of an eye-roll moment, not because I don't appreciate that people want to create yet another celebration, but how does the city or SIRJAC creating another celebration impact people like BASE, like SOU, Black Student Union, who are actively trying to get community to participate in what they already offer? Right? So it's really, it has to be a process where you de-center yourselves and the things you think you want or that you actually want. And that at every point, you are using something like the wave model, which it, it is not necessary for it to be that model, but something akin to that. And I think, again, Precious and Tara, I'm looking at you because I know your experience. You know that the, the kind of tenets of the model don't have to be exactly as they look in the slide that I shared. You can change them to support the process that you want. And I think when you all do that, then you have something to take to the city council and the mayor to say, here's a process that's going to take us twenty-four months. This is what we want to do. This is where we need to go to look for funding to support it. We understand that the city has challenges financially, but maybe we can fundraise or maybe we could get a small grant and have a match that comes from the city. That's when you can get creative because you have something that is viable, that you are also involving community in at every step rather than creating something that has unintended consequence and impact. So my recommendation, based on the reading, absorbing this information, is, is that you all pause and really work to come up with a plan based on some of your discovery that allows you the time to create something that is positively impactful and doesn't cause harm. Are there any questions? Folks want a minute to sit with that?
Thank you, Anya. I think that's really helpful. Because it's my last meeting, there is just one thing that I wanted to bring up about Listening Circles because I think that maybe something I had said with our city councillor Gina DuKane kind of got translated in, not the way that I was hoping. And I know I already talked about it with like Emily and Anne. And that was talking about how Listening Circles, you know, the possibility of, as Anya talked about, supporting other events that are happening through different groups. And one of the examples that I gave is when SOU's BSU, they opened up like a type of public forum to the public. And going to that and supporting that, that's a great Listening Circle because you're being invited into an authentic type of discussion that, that group is. that group is curating and opening to the public. I think that maybe one of my discussions that kind of got like that children's game telephone call that got mixed up was having SOU as part of listening circles. That was not what I was saying. I was just giving the example of for another example, the Samoan student group, they had their FIA FIA night, which is a celebratory night that they practice. And they planned for so, so long and they hope that the community will come. So I was giving that example of how these are authentic, you know, groups that are working so hard to invite the community in. A lot of the times the community doesn't even come, but these are type of, I think, the things that, you know, maybe a listening circle is their goals of like learning about the community. And I think learning about communities is also about the pride, right? Like it's not always about like, oh, you know, it's like difficult being here. It's also like this is what it is for us. This is a group that is here in Ashland or Southern Oregon, and this is how we celebrate ourselves. What I didn't don't want in moving forward and I and again, I'm saying this because it's my last meeting here, so I want to make sure it's heard. Is that I don't want the SOU student cultural groups to be a type of group that listening circles is like entering in without invitation. You know what I'm saying? Like I'm the faculty advisor for Asian Student Union. And so when they have their own meetings, that is at one time every other week that they come together. They have their own agenda of events. They decompress, they meet with each other, they connect. But there are events that students, student groups have where they are calling upon the community. Come, come, come. We want you to come. So those are kind of like two different things. And same thing with BSU, the Latino Student Union, when they have their meetings, they are coming together to connect. I hope there's no like pressure to like for like our group to, again, like as mentioned, like interrogate or like enter ourselves into that. But you know, I think that one thing that could happen is for us, not just with SOU, but the other groups that put on events, so much goes into those events, so much thought. And a lot of it, you know, part of it is healing, part of it is also celebration of identity. And that celebratory part is really important when you're a small group of people in a small city like this and there's maybe like 12 of you. So it's not always about like the difficulties of existing within Ashland. It's also like, this is how we celebrate each other and this is how we support. So I just wanted to make sure that was out there just because I think maybe some of the things I said just in conversation had got turned around to like, oh, let's use SOU. But let's use, let's like connect with these authentic events. Thanks.
That's great. That's great feedback. And I think it's important because also the dynamic of what those students do and who they are, every SOU student is not going to remain an Ashland resident either. So sometimes getting their perspective, and I'm not saying you don't get their perspective, but sometimes it's also remembering the ecosystem, the layered ecosystem of what it means to live in Ashland. OSF is such an example of like the kind of transient, for lack of a better word, nature of our employee base. We've got people that come every other year. Right? And then we've got people who are here every year. I mean, we've got people here for a small window of time. And so there's a there's a lot to that to consider and think about. Thank you for that, Precious. Anyone else?
I think, Anya, I have a couple of questions because I want to make sure that it's clear in my mind. So this is what I hear you saying, Anya. What I hear you saying is that the purpose of the pause is so that if the committee decides that this is something that we really want to do and really want to recommend to the city council that they put the time, energy and dollars into it. That we are not ready to do that. Okay, that's what I hear you saying, Anya. Correct so far?
That's, that is my opinion. Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I really appreciate that. Where I've lost you a little bit is what is it that the committee needs to do to even get us to that place? Because I heard you talking two years. And I didn't know if that counted. The less than one year we've already put into this. I didn't know if there has been such harm that has been done already. If it's like, you know, do we have to backtrack and try and mend? I mean, I don't know. And I'm looking a little bit at John and Allison for part of this. Because Barbara isn't here for sort of, you know, well, what has happened with the community members who have been asked, because it sounds to me like we might have done some damage already. And maybe I don't, maybe I'm overwhelming that. Oh, good. Here's Barbara.
I I can answer if you want at least the two-year piece, or do you want Barbara to to go?
I want, well, I just thought it would be better for your answer if you heard from people before you tried to answer it. Is that okay? Great.
And I've been, I've been here the whole time. I just had my video off and and I have about 10 more minutes. I think of the work that we did so far in the community. What we did, the subcommittee, the three of us divided up a list of 12 BIPOC partners. And we've been meeting with them and introducing ourselves, introducing SURGE, and then asking how we could help and support them in the community. I think that was good work and that was Allison's idea to approach it that way. Absolutely brilliant, in my opinion. Thank you, Allison. And we had really, we have had really good interactions. I think what we discovered was that most of the organizations we met with have not even heard of SURGE. They weren't aware of SURGE. There was not an existing relationship. That's probably different with SOU and OSF, but I'm talking about the other smaller ones. So it was good to let them know that, you know, we're here, we want to help, we're all on the same team. So I think back to hitting the pause button that we're not ready. I couldn't agree more with Anya. I assumed when when I first formulated this idea, I am new to Ashland, new to the committee. I assumed that we already had strong relationships with BIPOC partners, and that's why I assumed we could use them as facilitators for listening circles. And then where we hit the wall was that we needed funding to pay them for that facilitation, and that's where we got stuck. And I think now that was fortuitous because I think there's a lot of preparing the ground that's important to do first. And quite frankly, I think that we need a more robust committee as far as having more people of color on the committee because there, as far as I know, I don't think we have a black woman on or a man on the committee right now. So that, for example, we don't have somebody, Anya, if you were on our committee, you would guide us in many ways that we don't really have that wisdom available to us. So I think, I think you're absolutely right, Anya. I think that it's a good idea for at some point. But I think a preliminary plan to move in that direction with that maybe is a goal. And because meanwhile, two big missing pieces, we need funding to pay for facilitation. That's one. The other is we need to know when we walk out of these listening circles with actionable ideas, who's going to act on that? Because as Anya said, and as Mike Green said, the BIPOC community is tired of furnishing information and not seeing any meaningful change. And just talking is not what they're looking for. So that's my whole opinion.
Allison.
Thank you. Barbara, thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. So in response to your initial question, or maybe it was Emily's question about have we already done harm and do we have to backtrack? I think actually the committee has been very circumspect about both what we promise and what we demand. And I think that we have probably not caused any additional harm. We've mostly been information gathering and as Barbara said, expressed a willingness to listen and to try to assist if possible, but I I I don't think that we caused any harm in the process because I don't think we either demanded that people do things that we wanted them to do, or that we promised that we were going to do things for them or for anybody.
My, my, my takeaway from this has been when you said this, asking people to relive the trauma. That's the only area that in talking with these people, sometimes I did ask, you know, for examples. So that could have happened. But it was as, as Allison says, I was information gathering and I wasn't I wasn't saying anything beyond that. But I really welcome this pause because I've I've felt all along that I was floundering a little. You know, trying to, not having a clear idea of the direction we were headed. I was, I was just gathering information. And it was, okay, now what? And I think the now what is where I am right now.
Valid. I will, I will answer the question, some of the question that you asked, Emily, in terms of harm done. I have not received feedback of such, right? Like, so to be very clear, it's not like someone has come to me and said this process has been harmful and hurtful. I just know that in our work at OSF, there has often been unintended harm caused in dredging up certain conversations, events that happened. The one that comes to mind for me is what happened with the gas station attendant. I'll never forget it. The impact that it had on employees who had befriended the the young man that it happened to. So there's, there's, there's times where you think that you are helping. And again, it it just, it it can become harmful. In terms of the timeframe, that two years that I'm throwing out, there is no this work takes time. And it takes cultivated relationship. And what I've learned, I remember when I first graduated from college and I had this, I had to do a report on Rosie the Riveters in Richmond, California. And I went and I did all this information gathering. And I did a study and I I was so hyped about the work that I missed a bunch of steps in terms of what my intended outcomes of gathering these stories really was. So like it was part ethnography, part reporting, right? And the impact of that was that I offended people. And I remember the moment of having to go back, not just because I was wrong, but because I was hurt that I hurt people's feelings. Because I I kind of put them in a Petri dish. These were older women who had survived a lot, who were not being appreciated for their work. And I, with my young ideas, thought I could just kind of go in and and create something that they didn't actually want. And so listening circles often, again, good intent, but who's facilitating them? How are they manifesting into something that's useful? And how is the committee trained to also work together through those listening circles? Understand what to do with that information when you get it. And again, what the impact is. And so I don't think there was ever ill intent. I just think a planning. And I, and I'm going to look for some resources to recommend Emily for for you all as a, as a committee, because I feel like one of the things, and we, I think we talked about this when I was on the initial committee. Everybody here has a wealth of knowledge, right? But there's not a co-learning space. So you know what you know. Emily is an attorney. Precious knows what she knows. Allison knows, like, everybody has a thing that they know. But a collective impact model for changing something in community means we're all sitting together, learning at the same time, often at the same pace, which sometimes drives us crazy because some of us are like, I'm an avid reader and I can just ingest this information. And others are like, I need to talk about this 30 more times before it resonates, right? But I think any committee, commission group that's going to work together has to have that leaning to be able to say, oh, this is where we need guidance. This is where we need support. And this is where, as a committee, we lean in, understanding the parameters that you all have as a committee also. Right? And so I don't yet know how to recommend that, but I will give some thought to it. I don't know if it's literally using meeting sessions to do that. But it it feels to me like the two years is just a model. It's not a mandate, right? But really figuring out how you take the time that you're working together to figure out how you get to those things. Because when I look at the outcomes, the the kind of projected intention for the work, you're talking about changing things that require, in some ways, legal changes, housing changes. Your census data is based on a certain group of people. And affordability is not, it it's not figured into that. So there's some things that you may want to aspire to that you actually can't hit because it would mean changing the way housing happens in Ashland, right? And who it's available to. And so I just, I think getting to a space where you have agreement, clarity, and a system for how you're moving forward together, whether it's in six months, whether it's in 12 months, whether it's in 24 months, is what's going to be important. So I hope that answers your question. And I think it's, it's it's something that you're going to have to build to. And and so maybe it's one or two initiatives that change the state of inclusion for BIPOC community members. Maybe it's more activation in working with the existing BIPOC groups that you have as those partners. Maybe it's giving more of your time, more of your energy to those existing spaces. And then aggregating to something larger as that muscle grows.
I think that one of the things that I've heard tonight, Anya, from both you and Precious and others, maybe, I'm not sure, is that really the best thing that we can do at this point is to especially because, and I'm, I'm going to just lay it out. It's not as if anybody came to us and said, hey, will you carry forward this idea of listening circles? Because we really want to come in and we really want to talk to white folk about how it is for BIPOC people in the city. I mean, that didn't happen. And I think that's and and maybe it's, you know, you could say it's because they didn't know about us. But now that they know about us, unless I'm missing something, John and Allison and Barbara, because you were there, it's not as if any of the BIPOC organizations that you spoke to said, wow, this is something we really want to do. And because of that, I think that we really need to spend the time that it will take to go to the events that are being put forward by our BIPOC partners or BIPOC organizations and go. That's what I sort of, I'm hearing that now. And introducing ourselves as members of SIRJAC and asking if there's anything we can do to help them achieve what their goals are, not what our goals are. And when I looked at the wave model slide again, and at the slide you put up for transactional and transformative, I would say that I think that we were not engaging in a transformative manner, but that we were engaging in a transactional manner. To be really blunt about it. We wanted to have these listening circles, so we're coming to talk to you. As opposed to a transformative model which would not be the, this is what we want. So Anya, based on what you've said to me, I think I just laid out really honestly how I viewed Anya, based on what you've said to me, I think I just laid out really honestly uh, how I viewed uh, sort of what we've done up until now. And it's better to stop what we've done up until now if it's not going towards the transformative model. And I don't think it is. That's how I see everything that I've heard thus far tonight in fifty minutes. Or less than that. Do, do I have this wrong, anybody? Allison?
No, not at all. Uh, I, I just wanted to go back a minute um, on the uh, subject of the Juneteenth thing. Cause I'm, I'm not sure exactly how it got in the minutes the way it is, but our subcommittee at least, we were looking for existing Juneteenth efforts and trying to support them and trying to figure out who was doing it. I, at least our work was not really about trying to add another one or trying to impose it on anybody. We're, I mean, we're not even capable of doing that. So just to clarify.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, I read it, I read it the way in which I think you had intended it. Not that we were gonna go out and create our own. Uh, I'm sorry. Precious, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I think, yeah, I think with time and a lot of thought, listening circles can be something that is such a wonderful thing. I just wanted to share an example. And I, I think that it's a example I wanna share because I'm one of the few people of color in this uh, committee. Uh, so when the pandemic was happening, I know that it was very well-meaning um, that I was invited to like the Rotary Club and to the Ollie to talk about Asian American violence, Asian American Pacific Islander hate. And I think that that was a lot of these different groups that were trying to show and like genuine curiosity and empathy what was happening to Asian American people. Um, but it was also, I think when we talk about like trauma and like things that are very exhausting, like during that pandemic time, which was already very exhausting in our own ways to also like put together these live presentations of like, oh, this shooting happened at a nail salon and this many people died and this person got attacked on the um, New York subway. So like, it was getting really uh, it was all well-meaning that people were interested in Asian American hate and violence. Uh, but throughout time, you know, and, and our social gathering, that's when I kind of talked about, for me, like as an Asian American, that's not our story, you know, like the hate and the violence. Like, I'm right, I wrote a book, a manuscript about Asian American essential workers. So I think that there's a difference, you know, sometimes as a person who is not of that culture, we, we see certain headlines and we're like, oh, that's what we wanna talk about when we talk about that culture. But actually to that culture, you, we're like, uh, that's not us. You know, those are like people that have their own issues and hatred that are like attacking us and that's not our story. So I think that uh, finding like, what is like the actual story of people and where is their pride is so different than like, oh, this is like the headlines we're seeing, if that makes sense.
That makes sense. And also that none of us are monolith, right? So like anti-blackness is real, but it is not experienced the same by everybody. Anti-Semitism is real, but is not experienced the same by everybody. Um, a black Jewish person, what they experience in anti-Semitism is, is often a double whammy. A black Jewish woman who nobody openly knows or outwardly can say is Jewish, right? Like, I literally just had this, this conversation with a friend of mine who works at the ADL. And it's, it's a very real thing that we are intersectional, we are layered, we are multifaceted. And so, and, and that's the human of all of us, right? Our hu- we're, we're layered and vastly different. And um, I think there is harm for certain. I have lived experience in the harm in Ashland. But I also have experience with a lot of wonderful things that have occurred for me, which is why I stay employed at OSF. Like, it's this conundrum of, God, what happens sucks? But the racism and the homophobia and the misogyny and the transphobia that happens, happens at every corner of the earth. There is no safe place to go. The safety comes in doing the work. And you just gotta do it in a way that is as inclusive as is possible. Because the, the point again is to not cause additional harm. So I think taking the step back, sounds like everybody agrees, figuring out what the next steps are. And I will tell you, in terms of getting more people of color on this committee, I don't know what the solution is because I will tell you what, what is difficult is to exist in a space where you want to be, you want to live. People are supporting your organization, but then wanting you to come and participate in ways that make you more visible and more of a target is really hard. And I, you know, I shared this, I think with you, Emily, the experience I had of somebody following me and my son home in the middle of the night in Ashland. And then having to be on this committee and also being so publicly seen, working at OSF. And you all know this, I say it all the time, I'm not a theater person, right? That's not my background. I came to this organization to do work, but then to have your picture plastered on, you know, newspapers and in Variety Magazine. These are things I didn't ask for, but it's part of the work, right? And so then people are calling you and threatening you. So do you really wanna show up in a public forum? And, and talk about race and racism and harm? It's hard. It's hard to get people to participate. And so thinking about that, as you're thinking about how to get people on the committee too. Um, I, I'll never forget when we, the, the reason we ended up not having emails, right? For the committee. Individual emails. Remember the, the, the kerfuffle with that? Like, that people who don't agree with the committee and wanted to be vitriolic and say nasty things, like that the city was gonna have to wade through all that. So I think when you're thinking about what's next, really considering all of those moving pieces and how to create some balance for what you want, need, and how you wanna be helpful.
Anya, I really appreciate everything that, that you just said. And because we are going into a, a new era, okay? Um, I, I wanna make a couple of comments. There is incredible pressure. Um, I don't know. I think Precious, who was my co-chair for quite a while, and Anya, you were my co-chair. So it's like, I've had everybody who's been a co-chair, right here. Okay, back to back. Um, and there is pressure um, that I feel. And again, I'm being really honest here, from the city council, to do something. Right? We've made this committee. And in fact, we had to have a big, talk about a kerfuffle. Uh, Precious, you remember it very well. We had to have a big to-do over the maintaining ourselves as a committee when there was a change in the committee structure. And Anne, I know you remember this very well also. And part of that was, and we lost some members over it, over going from a commission to a committee and felt like they had been sort of downgraded, okay? But part of that is the extent to which we actually do something to move the needle on social equity and racial justice. And I feel like Precious really made a difference with the project that she worked on. Um, and she would not have been able to work on that prod- project without SURGE, without it being there. Um, so I think that there definitely are things that we have done that sort of satisfy the, okay, what are we doing here? But I also think, and again, I, I'm being really honest here, everybody. I also think that there's a lot of things that we can't do. We can't do certain things because of the makeup of Ashland. And there have been plenty of times, Anya, what you were describing in terms of your hesitancy to be on the committee. I think that you have unfortunately, a very horrible lived experience that would prevent you from taking that risk. I think that for many, many people, there's just what I call the tuna fish of life. Right? You have kids, you have a job, you have this, you have that. And you have things that make it hard for you to commit to being on a committee. And if there's a very low pool anyway, okay, of individuals of color in this town, then what you've got is you've got somebody somewhere with limited volunteer hours that are available to them. I really don't think that no matter what we did at SURJAC, that it would be a place where many of them would want to contribute their volunteer hours. And I know this because if you look at who we have had serve on our committee, we have had some uh, some black people serve on our committee who were sort of there for a while while they were there for us. But then really found better things to do with their time than being on this committee. And I think we have to recognize that in terms of that we don't have a clear direction. It's not like there is a uh, uh, we're not like the Planning Commission where there's a requirement that people sign off, the Planning Commission signs off on a building. We're not like Historic Preservation, where once again they need, or Transportation, or the Public Arts Committee. So we are amorphous by creation. And I think it makes it very hard for people to want to join a committee like that. And I'm being really honest here. The other factor that I think is there, and I know this from years and years of either being the pet Jew on a committee or the pet lesbian, is, okay, we've gotten our person now. Every time a Jewish issue comes up or a queer issue comes up, why less ask Emily? And you become the de facto expert. And that is not a good place to be. It's not good for you and it's not good for the other people. And I think that is something that we have also struggled with and will struggle with it. There is perhaps nothing wrong with saying either we need to regroup or there needs to be another structure than the committee. I don't know, but I do know that um, this feels uh, untenable if we have such a disconnect with the community that we are trying to help.
Thank you, Emily. I think one of the things that has been really helpful has been our social gatherings in terms of um, getting to know each other in a deeper way. A lot of times, sometimes telling little stories on Zoom might feel like, oh, it's not important enough. But when we get together in person for our social gatherings, those, those little stories are very important um, in getting to know each other and also working together. So um, I think there's something there in that type of connecting with each other. And I know I've stayed on this committee for all three years because I do think that there, you know, there should be space that is made for these type of conversations and connections in Ashland. Um, and in our region, I think that um, all the things that are challenging are actually the reason why I stayed on. Uh, it's like, like Anya said and Emily said, it's not easy to, you know, sometimes be that one person of that identity that, you know, is on the outside that you um, share with all the time. But I, I, I mean, that's the reason I stayed is I, I do think that we, it's so important to make space and uh, especially in a place like this. So I hope it continues, continues on in whichever way um, it transforms into.
I absolutely hope you all continue. I do think it is a struggle, like every, every form of inclusion, diversity, equity work, whether you are experiencing marginalization or you are watching it happen and you wanna do something about it. It, it's, it's painful work. It's, it's, it, it is movement work. It is, it is all the things. And I think um, it's worth it to continue. I do agree that then maybe it's looking at your structure to say, if we know there's a limited number of people in underrepresented um, or marginalized populations that can or will participate, how do we get the um, support from the city, from, you know, council, from mayor, from maybe the county? Like, how do you get support to do that work in different ways so that you continue to have liaisons, right? Or you continue, like, what is the thing that you can create to exist? Uh, this is my second time, I don't know if I told you this, Emily, working with a SURGE committee. So Marin had one. Predominantly white folks on the, on the commission. Same issues, right? But they figured out workarounds to working with people. Um, made some mistakes and regrouped and came back. One recommendation I do have for everybody on this call is if you don't know who Paul Kivel is, look Paul up. He's uh, in the Bay Area. His last name is spelled K.I.V.E.L., first name Paul. Um, Paul is so central to this work throughout the US, but he just, he has a, a a book called Uprooting Racism and it, just the advice and tenants of the work. Um, could, there are things that you could kind of extrapolate from that um, to figure out creative ways to do the work. And maybe that's one of the things, is like the committee taking a book and together at each meeting, like maybe it's just ten minutes of reflection. It's something that helps you see the work in a different way. Um, Paul happened to be a really good friend of my dad's growing up. It's one of those things where you didn't know who was in the house. I really was not sure who Paul was. And as an adult, I was like, wow, this, this person that used to come to dinner on Thursday turned out to be a really awesome, amazing activist and educator. Um, and I believe helped to start the California, um, whatever SURGE was in the beginning. So I would look into Paul's work and see if there's anything um, you know, worth pulling from that. Tara?
Thanks. Um, this is, um, feels like a really productive conversation, though we're also somewhat, you know, kind of skirting around the idea of not doing things. Um, because we have so many new members um, who are not connected to the through line of SURGE, I really feel as though we, we need a regrouping time just to talk about what our mission is. Like, what is our charge in the city? Um, because I think that touchstone is also sort of missing um, in terms of us being able to, to activate and say, oh, we're doing this because it connects to our overall mission as a part of the city. We are doing this because it connects to whatever we're trying to achieve in our short-term strategy. It's almost like we need to do a little bit of that strategizing work to kind of talk about, you know, if it is around this listening circle process, for example, we need the time to figure out how we make decisions, how we work together, and what it looks like to community build as a group. Um, rather than think about like proposal that then we shoot down. I think if we could root into what our purpose is and what we're trying to achieve and have a shared collective understanding of that, it would make it easier, I think, to think about what actionable steps are because we'd have something to point back to and say, this is our ultimate goal. So now we can start to build some steps to get to that thing.
Emily, Tara, this is a very good conversation that we're having. And I really appreciate that you just said that because we have focused on this issue of recruitment. And I really appreciate that you just said that because we have focused on this issue of recruitment. And maybe we should stop. Maybe we should also hit the pause button on the recruitment and do exactly what you're suggesting with the current members of the committee, which would be John, Allison, you, me, okay? And we could find out from Nita if she really is doing this with us or not. Okay? Um, and then at least that way, before new people were looked for or for what came, then we would be able to say, you know, this is where we see our, our, this is where we see ourselves going. Um, I, you know, everything that we did, we tried to tie it into the work plan that was given to us by city council and by the, uh, by the mayor, which was a, a work plan that we were supposed to follow and supposed to do. And I think I, I certainly tried to have us do that. Um, and I think that there's perhaps, and especially because we have this golden opportunity on June 18th, is to say, you know, we appreciate that you gave that to us, but that we really need to step back. Um, and figure out how we're going to work together and, and how we're going to work going forward. I think that might be a, a very good idea. Um, and I think maybe it's something we should be doing because we get this pressure of, okay, let's see where you're at with these work goals, um, by December. So you think, okay, this is what I'm supposed to be doing. Well, maybe we should be saying, we can't do that. It's not, uh, transformative, to use your word, Ann and I.
I mean, your work goals, quite frankly. Sorry, Allison, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. I'll, I'll come after.
You have a city council and mayor's office and, and group. And I, I really say this respectfully. How many people, aside from Gina, who came, like, how many people of color helped to create those work goals? How many people with lived experience helped to create those work goals? That was the whole purpose of my hire in Marin County. Was you can't go into a space, I can't walk into a space as a non-Jewish person full of Jewish people and say, here's the mandate for what you need. Here's a mandate for what I think you should be doing. Right? And so to have a group of folks say, here's what we want with what background, what deep dive into impacts, what deep dive into expectations. And I mean, this isn't new, right, Emily? I said this when we first started. I said, these are great aspirational goals, but there's going to be a bump in every turn because the folks that you need to be contributing to the process of, of what you're doing weren't here. This was based on some really horrible things that happened. And it's like the DEI movement where, you know, we reacted and responded to George Floyd and Breonna Taylor's death. And everybody just said, oh, just hire a DEI person and it'll take you great. And what you ended up with was the burden of the labor that's now being railed against and taken from people, right? That doesn't fix the issue. You still got to do the deep dive and get the recommendations and those things. So that's, that's also part of my, when I say pause, what, what do you co-create with voice outside of the, the kind of dominant voice in the space?
Yeah, see, and also, Anya, I'm just going to give a, a friendly amendment to the history that you were mentioning. Okay, so the awful thing that really happened was Aiden Ellison being murdered three blocks away from where many of us live, me, okay? And he was a guy I saw on the street all the time. Okay, and actually, he would sit on the porch of my neighbor's house right across the street, okay? So there was a lot of, at the time, emotion and what do we do about the fact that we are all, and I think many people in the community felt responsible. I know I did for what happened to Aiden. And at the time, when we were created, yes, it was George Floyd. It was Breonna Taylor. It was the Black Lives Matter movement. But it was also highly, highly local. And, um, and, and I just think it's really important to recognize that now. Um, could we do anything about the fact that Aiden Ellison and his individual case? I think we all felt like if we could figure out how to make Ashland better for black people, that yes, we could. Um, and I still think that's a, a pretty good motivating factor. But now it's four years later. And here we are. I'm sorry, Allison, you had wanted to say something. I just had to say that for where this came from.
Well, I think it's all part of the same discussion, really. Um, it, I, I'm completely on board with this stepping back, trying to talk amongst ourselves, understand what we're doing and where we're going. And it really relates to what Precious was saying about the value of our in-person social meetings. That really helps us to have a deeper understanding of who we are and where we're trying to go. And I, and I think a lot more of that kind of discussion is likely to produce a situation where we might be able to do something constructive. Although, you know, we're still stuck with this conundrum where we're mostly a bunch of white people with a white city council, mostly trying to decide how to fix other people's lives. So it, you know, it's, it's not an easy thing, but we can certainly work on it.
Tara?
Precious, your hand went up slightly before.
No, no, no. Uh, okay, I'll, um, uh, one thing I was thinking that it, it happened before many of our new committee members joined. But last year for Asian Heritage Month, um, one of our committee members, Juan Miguel and I, we just did a presentation about our own cultural ethnicities. And I think that a lot of times we might take for granted that, oh, I know about Tara, I know about John. Ellison, she lived in Alaska, but you know, like, something that could be really informative, whether it's for listening circles or just the group. But even to, oh, create, you know, you have each other as a listening circle presentation. Like when Juan Miguel and I got together and we kind of like talked about like, well, what is Asian American identity? And I learned that he, um, immigrated here not as a child, but like immigrated here as an adult. Like, those are those little things to a story that are very informative, not only as, uh, value to each other, but, uh, being able to really see what it's like to actually present. So maybe giving your own like little presentations of what your culture identity is could also help in the, um, the imagining of what a li- listening circle could be, maybe starting within the group. And always just like, I mean, I've worked with Emily for like three years, but I think that there's still so many elements and uh, stories that I have not heard about her identity. And same thing with Anne, so many things I learn all the time. So just this suggestion. Thanks, Tara.
My question is more about structure and process. Uh, it feels like we need a bit of a, some time together to sort of dream together. And I wonder if it's possible for us to have meetings that are outside of our scheduled meeting that would give us sort of a working space. Um, so that's, you know, more about like what city council rules allow. And I understand that any meeting we have would need to be a public meeting. But, you know, just that space for us to kind of sit around a table together and, and think about what, what we want to achieve and what we're hoping to do and looking at our initial charge and all of that sort of work that feels important right now. I don't know if you have guidance on that, Carrick or Emily?
I, I have a little bit of guidance on that issue. And I'm not talking at this moment, Tara. I'm not talking about the practicalities of people's schedules and location. Okay, which I think is really an issue. Um, uh, and that's why I think the beauty of Zoom is, is that then when I'm in Banden where I am now, and I have to go to Bend, uh, tomorrow to go for two weeks for work. Um, how that can still then incorporate me doing SIRJAC, okay? Um, and I know you have some issues also as well with travel and many other people do. So that's part of the issue. But apart from logistical issues, the answer is we can meet as often as we would like as long as it's publicly noticed that we're having a meeting. And what we can do is what we did for the social meetings is we can say, we're having a meeting, have it publicly noticed, and then you weren't there, Tara, but then a random person came from SOU and wasn't that nice? Um, I'm serious. She was a young person. It was wonderful. So then that way, somebody else found out about SIRJAC, okay? Uh, when we attend public events, like at Gay Pride, when we marched at Gay Pride, um, that was not something that we needed to notice because there was this Gay Pride public event. If we all marched down the street and started making motions, et cetera, or talking directly about committee business, then yeah, we would have had to publicly notice it. But, uh, since the pandemic, for the last two years, we have had a sizable presence at Gay Pride. Um, and I would think that would be another way, especially because it's one of the events that we said that we would deal with or, or look at. Um, I think it's another way for us to make sure that we see each other, um, and go to the events. I know John and I worked together at the Martin Luther King Day thing, and I know you were there, Tara, because you were running the stage. But, you know, is Tara there running the stages OSF? Yes. Is Tara there running the stages SIRJAC? No. And that's what I mean in terms of visibility stuff. I'm sorry, that was not a direct answer to your question. Um, uh, Precious, I need to go and you maybe need to make sure that we're talking about Juneteenth.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you so much, Emily. And also I want to be mindful of Anya Naya's time and, um, I appreciate all of the insight and discussion that you've inspired within our group. I was wondering if there's any final thoughts that you would like to give to us before, um, you depart as well?
No, I just have some kind of notes and talking points. Give me until, um, Monday or Tuesday, I will send them. I'll have Deb, uh, send them to you. Um, I just want to go back and review them and, you know, I'm here for any questions and you all know how to contact me.
Thank you, Ann and I. I always look forward to receiving anything from you, even notes and talking points especially. Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, Deb, the, the email that went out uh, to OSF about the racial equity tools, I think we should share that with SIRJAC as well.
Thank you so much, Anne, Anya Naya and Deb for being here today and for connecting with us. Um, again, I want to be mindful of your time. So thank you so much, uh, for our, the rest of our group. We just have a couple more items. One of them is, uh, to let you know what is happening for Juneteenth with, uh, two major organizations. One of them, I'll do it in, in, uh, the order of time. So the first one is through the EDI, Office of EDI at Southern Oregon University. And this is going to be on June 11th at 11:00 AM on Churchill Hall. I'll send out the flyer to Anne and Carrick and, uh, perhaps if they like, they could send that out. And, uh, one of our faculty members, uh, Von Monroe, he came from Texas. And he is, he and his family is, they're black and Korean-American. Uh, and they, him, him and his wife are really into film and they both teach film classes. Von Monroe is going to be the keynote speaker. So again, June 11th at 11:00 AM, Churchill Hall, through the Office of EDI at Southern Oregon University. And then, uh, the big event, which is Juneteenth by BASE, that's going to be happening on June 15th, 2024, Saturday, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Pear Blossom Park in Medford. And that's an all-day event. I know that many of us have gone before, but if you haven't, I, uh, very much so encourage you to attend. And lastly, are there any announcements from our group? Yes, Anne? You're muted.
Still muted. There you go.
Uh, so you recall that we had a banner made for Juneteenth that we hung across East Main. Um, last year was the first time. We do have Juneteenth flags. In addition to the banner, we've been notified by ODOT that it will no longer approve that banner, the Juneteenth banner that was approved a year ago. They have somebody new that is become very, very strict with the rules and the guidelines. And while it was approved by ODOT a year ago, it is not approved by ODOT this year. So if you don't see it, that's why. However, you will see, uh, the Juneteenth flags flying on the three flagpoles in Ashland. So that's in front of Pioneer Hall, on the plaza, and in front of the city council chambers.
Did they say why they didn't approve it?
I, I, they did not. They have, they have strict rules and regulations that they have to follow. And it sounds like they've been pretty lax in the past and they're tightening up those restrictions.
Well, yeah, but it'd be nice if we knew what to do to get it approved and we could get it up again.
Well, we'd have to make a new one.
Yeah, but, but how do we know what to, what to do?
We would, we would get those, we would get those parameters from ODOT.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for the update. And, um, any other announcements from any other members or?
Well, I, I would, I would like to say, um, my partner is part of Ashland together and they are putting on amazingly informative conversations at Carpenter Hall. I think it's the second Monday of the month.
Oh, great.
And I would encourage everybody to go to those if you can, because it's very, very rewarding.
Thank you so much, Don. I appreciate that. Yeah, I've seen that great things have been happening. And, um, there was one in collaboration with Tara too, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we have two conversations. We have two conversations coming up in July if folks are interested. So I can share that, I guess, as an announcement. So on July 8th, an author, Sarah Sanderson, um, who's from, uh, born in Oregon, talks about her relationship with Jacob Vanderpool, who was the only black man to be, um, forced out of Oregon due to the black exclusion laws. She found out through researching him that she's related to two of the white men involved in moving him out of Oregon against his will. And then goes through this whole experience in the book that she wrote, The Place We Make, about, um, grappling with white guilt and what that looked like for her. Um, so that'll be on July 8th. And then on July 15th, in collaboration with ashland.news, we're, um, hosting a talk with the Loma Cotsi Restoration Project, which is an indigenous-led group that does forest, uh, reclamation and restoration. And they'll be talking about, um, the, the practices that they use in their forest renewal projects, but also about how uh, folks can get involved and support their work and also just look towards, uh, fire resiliency as a community. Um, both of those will be in Carpenter Hall on OSF's campus. Um, and they are scheduled from 6:00 to 7:30. Um, and they've been really, like truly, as John said, wonderful conversations. Um, and it might be a way for us to think about as SIRJAC, how we're interacting with other city groups that are doing incredible work, you know, that have their fingers on the pulse of what's going on. So that we don't necessarily have to do the work, but we can amplify, um, what's already happening that's positive and lovely in our town.
Thank you so much, Tara. I want to say thank you again to Anne for all of her work. Um, you know, throughout the days and weeks of every month, she's sending out so many emails and having so many conversations with Emily and myself, writing proclamations and making sure that Emily and I received the forwarded emails from different people. So, um, thank you again, Anne. So um thank you again, Anne, and we wish you wonderful travels and bike trips ahead. And we welcome Carrick into uh as our city liaison. And I'm so excited for the work that he'll be doing with all of you. And thank you, Jeff Dahl, for uh attending today. And thank you, I, I know it's just uh Ellison and John and Tara still on the call. But thank you for all of your um thoughtfulness and hard work. And I know that just like how I mentioned with Anne, so much conversation and thought and all of these different types of things come about before we get some of these finished products or uh these different projects that come to uh fruition. But all of, all of that work is so important. So I hope that you still all keep in touch with me and I will always have love for this group. I've been with you for three years from the beginning. So uh thank you so much. And I am going to be mindful of our time. It's 6:31 and thank you.
Thank you, Precious. Thanks for all your work.
Have a great evening.
Thanks. Bye, everyone.